And plant a total of 2,700 trees. L.A. prides itself as a capital of diversity with its many cultures, ethnicities, and languages. And thanks to Grand Performances, a local music concert series, audiences are getting a look at international artists. Meet Sogand.
Like your hip-hop with a little Middle Eastern kick? Well, this is the place to get it. Grand Performances, which puts on free summer music concerts in downtown L.A.'s California Plaza, is capping off the summer with two Iranian musical artists, a DJ and producer named Omid.
He's making beats. He's one of the early Los Angeles beat makers.
And then there's the headliner, the artist Sogand, who's won quite a following in Iran and Germany with her sultry voice and hip-hop roots.
I think that Sogand is the epitome of the 21st century woman. She's a young artist that's really beginning to explore her own voice, and I think she's innovative.
This is Sogand's first U.S. debut, and already she's won the American fans over.
I love her. I discovered her, I think, about four years ago, and I love her music. I don't know exactly what the style is, but I would say kind of a jazzy type.
Los Angeles, I love Los Angeles. It's Terangelis. Many of Iranian people are there, and I like it.
Part of the work that we do is bringing artists and art forms that represent the many different communities that make up the city of Los Angeles. We inspire community, we celebrate diversity, and we unite Los Angeles through free access to global performing arts.
Oh, yeah, there's that, too. These concerts are always free.
We believe that art should be not a ticketed, value-driven experience that is expensive. We think that art should be something that everybody is able to consume and enjoy.
Because who can put a price tag on dancing yourself into bliss with a little hip-hop belly dancing?
For more info, visit grandperformances.org. Check out the work of local talent during the Frog Town Art Walk, tie up your running shoes for a good cause, and go back in time with your favorite video games. Pac-Man, anyone? All this and this week's things to do. Get ready for the annual Frog Town Art Walk in Elysian Valley, featuring dozens of special exhibits from local artists and craftmakers along the L.A. River. The Frog Town Art Walk is a biennial free tour of the studios of the artists and artisans of Elysian Valley. Run by Elysian Valley Arts Collective, the Art Walk will have two official stages featuring a variety of bands and lots of food trucks. It all takes place on Saturday, September 22nd, from 4:00 to 10:00 p.m. For more, visit frogtownarts.com. Join thousands of people coming together to support Homeboy Industries at the 10th Annual Homeboy 5K. You can expect a morning filled with fun, music, and laughter as they embark on a 5K Run Walk throughout historic downtown Los Angeles. Both the 5K and Kids 1K Run will start and finish in front of Homeboy Industries' iconic Chinatown headquarters. Every registration helps better the community, so sign up and make sure to get your family, friends, neighbors, and coworkers to join in on the fun. The 5K Run Walk takes place Saturday, September 22nd. For more, visit homeboy5k.rallybound.com. This two-day free play event will transport guests back in time for the ultimate arcade rewind. Union Station's Retro Arcade Experience will feature over 40 cabinet games from the '70s, '80s, and '90s. Held in the historic Ticket concourse, the Retro Arcade Experience will allow visitors to enjoy an eclectic collection of classic arcade games and specialty pinball cabinets, including fan favorites Pac-Man, Donkey Kong, and Street Fighter. From 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. each day, guests can enter a Pac-Man tournament and compete for top honors and a Pac-Man trophy. It all takes place Saturday, September 22nd, from 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and Sunday, September 23rd. For more, visit unionstationla.com. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from all of us here at L.A. This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org, and check out our newest social media videos, "L.A. This Minute." We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
Hi, I'm Gina Rae, and this is my dog, Whippet. We're from Winnetka. Get it, girl. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35. This is our city and our channel.
...the council chambers so we can begin our work for today. Okay, if everyone could please try to find a seat. If everyone could please try to find a seat. Want to welcome you to City Hall, welcome you to the Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday, and of course, the public is welcome. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. We have a quorum, if you please call it a roll.
Blumenfeld, Bonn, and Biscayne, Sedio, Englander, Herstau, and Weezer, Corets, Krikorin, Martinez, Ofero, Price, Rodriguez, Rue Wesson, 10 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Blumenfield moves. Ofero, seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Price moves. Corets, seconds. Continue.
Mr. President, items 1 through 6 are items noticed for public hearing.
Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, there are cards on all six items.
Then let's continue.
Items 7 through 22 are items for which public hearings have been held. There are requests to hold item 8, as the committee report has not yet been submitted, item 11 for an amending motion, item 19 for an amending motion, and item 21, the committee report has been posted and circulated for council's consideration. However, the committee had no quorum, and public hearing was not satisfied.
Okay, let's hold the items that's been requested. And 7, I'm being informed to hold 7 as well. All right, so let's vote on the remaining items. Please open the roll. Close the roll to have you lay the vote.
11 ayes.
Continue.
Items 23 through 25 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, there are cards on all items.
Okay, let's move on to Mr. Corets.
I'd like to ask that we hold 24 special for discussion.
We will discuss that item, Mr. Corets. Continue.
On the continuation agenda, item 26 is an item noticed for public hearing.
Do we have a card?
Yes, there are cards on item 26.
Okay, then let's keep rolling.
And, Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations. Items called special or general public comment?
Okay, members, before we begin the presentation portion of our agenda today, I'm going to take up some general public comment. And I'd like to start it off by calling Mr. Schoonover, Bob Schoonover, Mindy Garland, Joe Stringer, Orino Obanato, and Beverly, Beverly Roberts. So if you guys would please come forward.
Good morning, Mr. Council President, members of the City Council. Good morning. The Coalition is here to support the Fix L.A. action, but it's also an opportunity for me to try and communicate to you the level of frustration the members of the Coalition have in city negotiations. We are meeting, you know, an hour, hour and a half on a Wednesday. One side responds, one side presents, then it goes to the next week. You know, this is kind of like taking a rowboat to Catalina, okay? We need to put a motor on this boat, and we need to do it now, because... I want to emphasize, the frustration in this room is what? Tell them how frustrated you are, and tell them now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I want to get as many speakers in as I can. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, my name is Mindy Garland, and I'm representing the Los Angeles Black Workers Center and the Fix L.A. Coalition. I'm here to urge you all to make good on your promise of creating 5,000 new jobs in Los Angeles. Half of all... Half of all black people in L.A. in underrepresented communities are unemployed or underemployed. Creating 5,000 jobs means family sustainable jobs for black people and people of color in Los Angeles. It would also mean that underrepresented and low-income families can continue to live and thrive in Los Angeles and not be pushed out by high rent and no jobs. However, this promise has not been realized, and what we do see is the continuance of unemployment and underemployment in our communities. We continue to see that people are being pushed out of L.A. because they can't afford it, and they are not thriving. Nevertheless, we live in L.A., we work in L.A., and we vote in L.A. So this is our city to council members. So I urge you all to make good.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Next. And then I'm going to Gloria Medina and Bill Prizlucky. Yes. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, my name is Joe Stringer, and I'm here with ACE and Fix L.A. And the reason for being here is to stop the riddicraft that's been going on for so long in the city of Los Angeles. We have been promised 5,000 jobs. Where are they? We have been promised that our streets, sidewalks, potholes, all would be fixed. What happened? But now we have a mayor that says he wants to be the next president. How in the world can he be the next president and do for this country when he hasn't did for L.A.? Has he fixed any streets? No. Has he filled any potholes? No. Where are the 5,000 jobs? No mayor, no mayor can run this country with the promises that he has promised us and haven't kept a one.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Roberts, Beverly?
Good morning, councilmen.
Morning.
I'm here with ACE and Fix L.A. I'm also talking about the 5,000 jobs that has been promised to us. And you missed the opportunity to hire local help. We need to do that, because there's so many people that need jobs. Still, our city has the most cracked sidewalks, the most unpaved streets, the alleys filled with trash, and bulky items. Needs to be fixed, needs to be cleaned up. They know... They know the cleanup streets program is obviously falling apart, and they can see the city's massive repairs backing with their own eyes, and so do we. And we want it fixed, because we live in L.A., we work in L.A., we vote in L.A., and we pay taxes.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Thank you. If I could get the next speaker, please identify yourself.
Gloria Medina from Scope. I'm deputy director at Scope. Good morning. I am here representing South L.A. grassroots residents, grassroots members, and I bring a message from them, directly from them, letting you know that it has been two years, over two years, that we got a promise from the city, a commitment, that we would have, we would restore vital city services, hiring 5,000 jobs by June 2018. I can tell you how many times these same residents have come to this chamber to tell you how important and how urgent this commitment is. They are sick, they are tired of telling the mayor that we struggle to wheel our disabled children over broken sidewalks, that our community can't, our kids cannot safely bike on our sidewalks because they aren't clean, that our alleyways are not being cleaned when we requested. These are issues that we know that wouldn't be tolerated in other communities, but yet they persist in South L.A. and Pacoima in Koreatown.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker. And if I could get Stacy Carney, Victor Vasquez, and Lamont White to line up. Yes, sir, identify yourself.
Yes, I'm Bill Prizlucky. I'm the executive director of Power People Organized for West Side Renewal. I'm here today with our leadership team from Pacoima, who came all the way down to downtown City Hall again, because we are still waiting on those 5,000 jobs. We are still waiting on the services that our community needs. We are still waiting on opportunities for our community. We have a mayor who wants to call himself a progressive and run on that reputation. A progressive doesn't just sign paper, a progressive gets the job done. Our members work in L.A., we live in L.A., we vote in L.A., and we are deadly serious about this. We need to move this program forward. We need an actual investment in our community. Pieces of paper are not what we're asking for. We're asking for real jobs, real services for communities that need it. We have members who are ready and willing to work. We got to create the opportunities for them to put their work into the community and improve the community for everyone.
Thank you. Next speaker. Please identify yourself. And if I could get Sylvia Alvarado and Carmen Hayes Walker. Yes, identify yourself.
My name is Stacy Carney, and I'm a senior chemist in the Environmental Monitoring Division for L.A. Sanitation. I'm with SEIU Local 721, MOU 17. The Fix L.A. Coalition has delivered on its promise to you, but you have broken your promise to us and to the people of Los Angeles. We've provided reliable, high-quality public services to your constituents, and when the Great Recession hit, we consented to a citywide hiring freeze. You promised us it would be lifted when the economy improved. In fact, the economy is booming. You have just approved the biggest budget in L.A.'s history in this very room, but the council did not authorize one penny more for additional full-time staff. Instead of fixing L.A. by hiring in, the council and Mayor Garcetti choose to contract out. We have fulfilled our end of the bargain, fulfill yours. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Yes. Good morning, members of the Los Angeles City Council. My name is Sylvia Alvarado. I work for the L.A. Harbor Department, MOU 15. I've been there for seven years now, and I enjoy working for the city of Los Angeles. But the bottom line is that we are overworked and understaffed. All we're asking for is fair wages and benefits for every city worker. My coworkers and I pretty much work paycheck to paycheck. So any type of benefits that we have to pay into our medical will be a big hardship for us. So we're asking you, please, please, there's no other way to say it, because that's the truth. Without the people, the harbor doesn't run. All we are, we are all fighting for a good contract. We deserve... That's what we mean when we say our city, our fight. The harbor isn't just for us. It's our city. We don't work there, we live there, work there. And this is my town and my community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Next speaker, please. Please come forward. Just identify yourself for the record. Good to see you.
Hi. Carmen Hayes Walker, ASME Local 3090. You know, the city of Los Angeles just, just settled a budget that was the largest in history, and I can't believe that we are sitting at the table still after starting in April and not having a, a, a contract for the workers that work for the city of Los Angeles. It doesn't make sense that we are just moving at below a snail's pace to get a contract. I believe that the city would like to have us settle a contract, and so would the workers of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Please identify yourself and welcome.
Hans Russo, I work for L.A. City Sanitation. I'm with the International Union of Operating Engineers. I just wanted to say that in times past when the city was low on money, the unions made concessions, were paying the increased cost of the city asked for, and everything we did for the city, it's not being reciprocated back. We are here to serve the city. We like our jobs. We like helping the people on the streets. Even in my position, I've had, and my classification has been on continuous open for five years for my classification, which is a wastewater treatment mechanic. We need these jobs. You hear the community complaining that we're not getting hires. We need to get these jobs in. And on top of it, the unions have done the city right, but now the city is trying to do us in. This is not the way it's supposed to work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker. Identify yourself, sir. Good to see you.
Good morning, Council. My name is Lamont White. I am a property officer within LAPD, MOU 18, representative member of SEIU 721. I've been in Property Division for two years, and I'm here to talk about this current contract. This contract is not just important to us, it is important to everybody in the city of Los Angeles. Because for generations, city jobs have been a stable pathway to a comfortable, stable, and secure middle-class living, and that's not the case anymore. We need to fix that in our city. Public safety means a lot to me, because that's what I do. I take pride in my work, but not just my work. All of us here take pride in our work, and that should be reflected in the compensation we receive. The city works because we all work, and that means something whether anyone here believes it or not, and we take pride in that. And the fact is, people who work and live in the city of Los Angeles should be able to afford to work and live in the city of Los Angeles. And that's why we say "our city, our fight." Thank you.
Thank you. So Mr. Gordo, can I assume that you're gonna close this out?
I'm going to close it out, sir.
Welcome.
Thank you. Morning, Mr. President, members of the City Council. My name is Victor Gordo, and I'm co-chair of the Coalition of L.A. City Unions. But that's not why I'm here. I'm here in support of our other coalition, the Fix L.A. Coalition, who is interested in jobs, who's interested in services, and we're here in support of both of those things. I'd like everyone who's here today that's interested in jobs and services for the people of Los Angeles, to please stand. I know... I know each of you. I know each of you is interested in these issues. And we're here to remind you that words and contracts, and words in contracts, matter. Past contracts need to be respected, and future contracts need to be entered into respectfully. And so we're here to remind you that we're here to serve you, and we ask respectfully that all of you take an interest in what's occurring. All of you take an interest in supporting services for the people of Los Angeles, your constituents, and support the work of Fix L.A. and support the workers of the Coalition of L.A. City Unions. Thank you very much.
Thank you all for coming. Thank you. Well said. Well said, and thank you for coming. Okay. All right, guys. Okay, now, we, uh... We accommodated you, let us... We accommodated you, let us continue our, our work here. Again, you're always welcome. Thank you for coming, and thank you for that powerful message. At this point in time, I'm going to... Recognize Mr. O'Farrell, Mr. Bonin, to begin the presentation portion.
Oh, these are exciting times for LAX and for the city and region of Los Angeles as we modernize and transform with all the changes we're making in our transportation network, the miles running through our subway, and these renovations at Terminal 2 and 3 in partnership with Delta is a major part of that plan.
Starting with the video here.
We've been the fastest-growing carrier here since 2009, and our aspirations for L.A. are much, much larger, which is why we're spending almost $2 billion to build out this terminal.
Could we cue that up with volume?
Can we turn that up a bit?
Restart it with volume, please. Yeah. Start, start from the beginning with sound.
You may want to move that for now. Mr. Bonin, why don't you just sit tight for a minute? We have several people exiting the chambers.
These are exciting times for LAX and for the city and region of Los Angeles as we modernize and transform with all the changes we're making in our transportation network, the miles running through our subway, and these renovations at Terminal 2 and 3 in partnership with Delta is a major part of that plan. We've been the fastest-growing carrier here since 2009, and our aspirations for L.A. are much, much larger, which is why we're spending almost $2 billion to build out this terminal.
This is a unique opportunity for us as an organization to build a new world-class airport.
So we knew we needed to step back to really create a new vision for what the passenger experience wants to be.
Skyway at LAX is going to essentially take a, a two-terminal experience and combine it into one.
As we redesign our ticketing lobby, there will be ample space for us and our partners.
From the minute you're dropped off at the airport, you want to be able to go through security at your gate seamlessly.
You have a single point of entry to all of our concourses, Terminal 2, Terminal 3, and the northern side of Tom Bradley for an easy customer experience. We're building a brand-new Sky Club, which will be one of our largest in the system with views of the ocean all the way to the Hollywood sign. We also want to be local as we think about our experiences for shopping and eating, really give customers a sense of what this city is about.
There's lots of light and airiness, and you get the sunshine coming in to the, to the concourses.
With all the devices people are carrying with them, they need to be able to power up, whether that's in a gate area or whether that's in a club. We plan to build that.
Or as an arriving passenger, creating that welcoming experience.
While this project will take us several years to complete, the goal is to do each phase in a way that minimizes interruption to the customer experience and maximizes our ability to maintain on-time performance.
We were famous for, for our customer service.
Well, I've been traveling with Delta for 3 million miles over about 20 years, and it's the gate agents, it's the flight attendants, the pilots who are always trying to serve our customers that fly along.
LAX is becoming a world-class transportation hub in the next 10 years, and we wanted to make sure that our troops and their families had a world-class experience here at the Bob Hope USO at LAX. And Delta Airlines is helping us make that happen.
At LAX, we've invested in the heart of the city. Delta is investing in the hub of the city. Together, over these next 10 years, imagine what we can do.
People are really looking for not only an efficient process, but a great experience.
That is what we're trying to do here in Los Angeles, enabling us and our partners to work together to serve Angelenos and everybody who wants to visit this great city.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good morning, colleagues. Mr. O'Farrell and I are here today to make sure you got your new toy. You each have a new plane on your desk, because we are commemorating and celebrating the great work and the great people of, of Delta Airlines. Mr. Buscaino talks constantly about waterfront development. And while I don't talk as often as he does about LAX, I've talked often about how important it is that we have an LAX that is a world-class airport and a first-class neighbor. And I have talked a lot about the great work that has been happening over the past few years to, to make that a reality. The incredible work that's being done building a consolidated rental car center, getting Metro to the airport, building an APM around the airport. The incredible work that the folks at LAUA are doing to make our airport one of the most sustainable and environmentally friendly in the world. And the incredible work that the airport and its partners, that the airlines are doing to improve the passenger experience by modernizing and improving our terminals. And today, we are celebrating Delta Airlines, which is one of the best partners we have in that effort, one of the best friends that the passenger has at LAX. They're doing amazing work, making sure that the passenger experience is transformed at that airport. Earlier this year, I was lucky enough, along with many of the people behind me, to attend Delta's groundbreaking for the renovations at Terminals 2 and 3, which you saw mentioned in that video just a second ago. Delta is making major, major investments to improve the passenger experience at LAX, with more than $1.86 billion of renovations coming in the years ahead. These renovations are not going to come without some disruption, but I'm happy to say that Delta has proven that they know how to take on a complex project at LAX with minimal disruptions, disruptions to travelers and to my constituents who live around the airport. Proof of their attention to detail came last year during Mother's Day weekend, when they spearheaded the largest terminal operations move in the entire world. Over the course of three days, more than 15 airlines operating at LAX shifted terminals, moved their support equipment, and relocated their staff. This massive and complicated terminal move was pulled off with remarkable professional precision, and we successfully avoided any major operation disruptions or any gridlock in the central terminal area, which is frankly a miracle and one we're very grateful for. Delta has not just been a great partner in our modernization efforts at LAX, but they've been a great corporate partner throughout Los Angeles. They're active in the community. They've partnered with lots of groups and organizations in our region, including Volunteer LA, Junior Achievement of Southern California, the YMCA of Metropolitan LA, Children's Hospital, Kaboom, where they helped build four playgrounds throughout the city, Covenant House, Bob Hope USO, Habitat for Humanity, L.A. Pride, AIDS Walk, the Regional Food Bank, just to name a few. And there's someone we should acknowledge in particular who's not here with us today, Bridget Nelson, a Delta Sky Club Ambassador at LAX. We helped pull together today's presentation. Let's give her a hand. And I... So let me now introduce Mr. O'Farrell, who needs no introduction, who's gonna say a few words about Delta as well. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Mike. To our colleague Mike Bonin, I want to thank you for explaining so, in such an articulate manner, the breadth and scope of the beast that is LAX and all of the incredible improvements that are happening, that are coming, and being such a scholar on all things LAX. And I want to thank Delta for your investment, your incredible investment in Los Angeles, your investment at LAX, because we are building our rightful place in the, the, the class of world-class cities. And that's the era that we're in. Los Angeles is becoming a world-class city, and we are claiming our rightful place in that fraternity of cities, if you will. And, and that's the era that we're in. It's, it's so exciting, all the changes coming to Los Angeles Airport. And Delta is a critical piece of those improvements. I, I in particular want to highlight Delta Airlines for their support of inclusion and acceptance in partnering with L.A. Pride through their partnership with the American Red Cross, American Cancer Society, APLA Health, and AIDS Walk Los Angeles. Delta honors L.A.'s rising stars in entertainment, technology, and media through Delta Ones to Watch. Delta values honoring diversity in the workplace and standing up against special interests during an important debate in our country. And without belaboring this point, I want to thank Delta in particular for breaking your ties with the NRA in February. I want to thank you for that. You have been a leader in the righteous indignation that we are all feeling in an unprecedented way for, or I should say, for elevating the reality of an organization that promotes guns everywhere, anywhere, to anyone without any regulation whatsoever. So thank you for your part in helping to make this country safer and for calling attention to that very, very important issue. So without further ado, I'm gonna return this back to Mike, and he's gonna make a special introduction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell.
Colleagues, Mr. President, you know, for a very, very long time, there had been feuds between the airport and its neighbors over how that airport was gonna modernize. And that feud obscured the fact that most people who lived in the neighborhoods that are in the shadows of, of LAX really love and appreciate our airport and have wanted it to be a world-class airport for a very long time. And they celebrate what is happening there now, and they celebrate and really appreciate And they celebrate what is happening there now, and they celebrate and really appreciate Delta Airlines in particular. And to illustrate that, I just want to ask Denny Schneider, who is the head of ARSAQ, which-
Wait, let me stop you. That's a good friend of my good man. Everybody, give Denny a round of applause. He worked so hard, took a very sane approach, and helped Mr. Bonin tremendously. Welcome, Denny.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Mr. President, Councilmembers, I'm thrilled to be here. I praise the airport first for having the knowledge and the will to put the alliance partners together. But even more important on this, that this alliance partner, Delta, has invested in this community and is doing all the right things. I've been working for more than 20 years to get this airport to be something safe, convenient, and affordable, and we really appreciate their efforts. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks, Denny. Thank you. And now, I get the great pleasure of introducing Ranjan Ghoswami. Now, Ranjan is the VP of Delta Sales here in Los Angeles and the entire Western Region, who has been part and parcel of this investment, this expansion. So let's give a hearty welcome to Ranjan Ghoswami.[458.41][458.41](APPLAUSE).
And one of the stars of the video. You forgot the-
Yeah. That's about the extent of my video performance for today. Good morning. I am thrilled and happy to be here alongside so many of my LA-based colleagues on behalf of Delta Airlines and our 80,000 worldwide employees. I first want to thank Mayor Garcetti and Council President Herb Wesson, as well as each and every member of the council today for your leadership of our fine city and your partnership with Delta as we work together to build a better LA. Thank you to the council, especially council members Bonin and O'Farrell, for today's resolution recognizing Delta's commitment to the city of Los Angeles and our culture of caring for our people, our customers, and our community. It was important for me and the entire LA leadership team here that our team members came with us today, because today is actually really about them. Without these people, none of what we have been doing together would be possible. The people standing alongside me and their colleagues are a force, and not just at LAX and on our airplanes, but they are also helping to build this community for the future in so many ways. As a longtime partner of Habitat for Humanity, they have made families' homeownership dreams come true and supported affordable housing for Angelenos. Through our partnership with Kaboom, they have built playgrounds to make sure the youngest of Angelenos have access to the play that they deserve. They have welcomed and bid farewell to thousands of servicemen and women in LA through our partnership with the Bob Hope USO and the half-million dollars we recently donated to their new facility, which is being dedicated next week. They have proudly walked alongside members and allies of LA's vibrant LGBTQ community at LA Pride. They have walked and raised thousands of dollars to support Angelenos living with HIV/AIDS through AIDS Walk LA and the great work at APLA, and they've impacted young lives and minds through the work that we have done at Covenant House California and Junior Achievement. And they do all this and so much more that I do not have time to go into today as volunteers on their days off. They do this before and after their shifts at the airport and before and after they take flights across the globe. At Delta, we believe wholeheartedly that we connect the world better than anyone else, and the people around me right now are the "we." They are the people who help Angelenos bring products, services, ideas, and content made in LA out to the world. They are the people who bring families together. They are the people who cheer on LA's beloved sports franchises, the LAFC, the Kings, and the Lakers, all proud Delta partners, and they work alongside our many partner airlines in LA, from Aero Mexico to Korean Air, Virgin Atlantic, Virgin Australia, Air France KLM, to make sure that every Angelino can get to every destination nonstop from LAX, Delta's largest partner hub in the United States. And these are the people who move more planes, more people, and do so more on time than any other airline in the world, yet with caring, compassion, and a spirit of continuous improvement and innovation. And they are the people who do the connecting, because when we connect people, we are not just talking about dots on a map. We are talking about bridging the gaps between cultures, ideas, and beliefs. Indeed, the people of Delta help make the world a little bit smaller. On behalf of our entire team, we are grateful for the unprecedented public-private partnership that we share with this council through the project that we all hold so dear together, the Delta Skyway at LAX. As one of the largest infrastructure projects in our region, the facility will finally allow us to deliver the best-in-class customer experience that Angelenos deserve and to give our people a workspace commensurate with their professionalism. To say I am proud of my team and our team is an understatement. Together, we are so proud to call ourselves Angelenos and to work in partnership with you to move LA forward. Thank you again for this incredible recognition.[692.11][692.11](APPLAUSE).
Mr. Bonin and O'Farrell, I do have Mr. Buscayino on the queue. Can I call him now? Mr. Buscayino?
Thank you. I'm there taking their photo. I just want to rise and recognize Delta Airlines and their ongoing investment into our airport. You know, in the millions upon millions of dollars that they're investing in the capital improvements at our airport, I have witnessed firsthand of the improvements and the investments that you're making in our city from my district and beyond. Most recently, I see Dana DeBel, who's here. Dana's been a huge champion for us in our CD-15. Most recently, I had the honor, in Watts, to serve alongside your employees at the Habitat for Humanity project in Watts, and I was up in the rafters with Delta Airline employees. And I just also want to just recognize the work that you're doing at all levels. And then, most recently, of course, was the LA Fleet Week that Delta was one of our core partners in ensuring that we recognize our servicemen and women, the United States Navy. Just last week, I had an opportunity with Bob to visit the Bob Hope USO site at LAWA, and your investment there was evident. So, thank you so much for all that you do for our city, the partner that you are in all aspects. We thank you, we honor you, and I want to thank Mike and Mitch for bringing forth this incredible partner that we have at our airports. Thank you.
Let's give them another round of applause. Thank you so very much.[803.01][803.01](APPLAUSE).
All right, we'll head in back.
Yeah, we're good. Up for you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, before we go into our next presentation, I'd like to take up item eight at this time.
Yes, and on item eight, the committee report has been posted and circulated for council's consideration.
Okay, members, we're voting on item eight. If you would please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Can we send that forth with?
Yes, we can.
Okay. And I'd like to recognize Mr. Rue, if he could start making his way to the center aisle.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good morning, colleagues. Today, I am here to celebrate one of the city's leader in civil rights and social justice, fighting for Angelenos since 1983, and that is Asian Americans Advancing Justice Los Angeles. Let's give them a round of applause.[886.61][886.61](APPLAUSE). For the past 35 years, Advancing Justice has stood up for the rights of Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, Pacific Islanders, and many others. By offering direct legal services, defending civil rights through policy and research, and building cross-cultural bonds, they help create multicultural Los Angeles that is more equitable, harmonious, and just. When immigrants of all backgrounds are mistreated, Advancing Justice is here. When AAPI are mistreated in the workplace, Advancing Justice is here. When minority groups face crimes or discrimination, Advancing Justice is here. And you better believe, whether it's the Muslim ban or voter suppression, Asian Americans of Advancing Justice is there to stand up to the Trump administration and fight for our civil rights. I am so proud to know this organization and what they have done for immigrants and minority communities in Los Angeles, but most of all, I am proud of how they have built bridges. As the nation's largest AAPI legal and civil rights organization, Advancing Justice does not just serve the AAPI communities, but also connects AAPI communities with the causes of social justice and standing up for what's right. I also want to take this time to recognize a giant and a pillar, not just because they're my constituents in Silver Lake, but, you know, and we'll be hearing more from the founders and the current executive director, Stuart Quo and his wife, Pat. But I just want to recognize that not only are they getting a lifetime achievement award this year from Advancing Justice, but I am here because of them. I stand on their shoulders. If it was not for their work 35 years ago, I would not be here today.[1015.82][1015.82](APPLAUSE). Now, we're going to hear from Stuart, but before, to take a little bit more to talk about what Advancing Justice's work means for our city, I'd like to invite, first invite up Board Chair Nita Son.
Welcome, Madam Chair.
Mr. President, members of the City Council, good morning. On behalf of the Board of Directors and the staff at Asian Americans Advancing Justice Los Angeles, I want to thank Councilmember Rue and his wonderful staff for making this day so special. And thank you to all of you, City Council members, for supporting this important and well-deserved recognition for 35 years of service to the community of our organization. I also want to thank all the supporters, sponsors, staff standing behind me, who have come to celebrate this very important day. Today, Advancing Justice Los Angeles is the nation's largest legal and civil rights organization for Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders, and serves more than 15,000 individuals and organizations every year. We focus and serve and support the most vulnerable members of our community and also build a very strong voice for civil rights and social justice. None of this, of course, would not be possible without the vision, passion, and dedication of our founder, Stuart Quo, and the tireless efforts he and his amazing wife, Pat, have dedicated to the organization and to our community. So a celebration of Advancing Justice is a celebration of all of the hard work they have put into the organization and into the community. And all of Los Angeles is made better because of the work that they do and the tireless work of the amazing staff that represent this organization. I just want to recognize them for everything that they do and take a minute to just share And once again, thank you for your recognition of this very important day. This is an unforgettable moment for our organization and also for the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you.[1172.15][1172.15](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Nita. And I'd like to invite up the 35th Anniversary Dinner Chair, Board Member Thomas Lee.
Welcome, sir. Welcome.
Thank you, President Wesson, Councilmember Rue, and the members of the City Council. I stand here today as both a Wells Fargo team member and a board member of Advancing Justice, and I'm honored to be here to help with this recognition of this important organization. For 35 years, Advancing Justice has been leading the cause for civil rights, equality, and inclusion for Asian-American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander communities. At Wells Fargo, we're proud to be the event sponsor this year for the 35th Anniversary Dinner, especially as we recognize with the lifetime achievement award Stuart Quo and Pat Quo for their decades of service to the community.[1231.71][1231.71](APPLAUSE). Now, I'd be remiss not to mention that, as the Dinner Chair, we would welcome very much all of the city's support of all Angelenos, and that we expect this year's event on October 17th to be the biggest yet for the community and for the organization. Now, while Advancing Justice serves the AA, NH, and PI communities, really, their work is about seeking justice and equality in civil rights for all. So, thank you again, City Council, for today's event and for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you, Thomas. And next, one of AAPIC's great partners and longtime supporters, we have Steve Nissen and Terry Hernandez of the greatest theme park in the nation, NBC Universal.
All right, welcome.
Good morning, Council President Wesson, Councilman Rue, and members of the City Council. And I apologize, Terry Hernandez of NBC4 could not join me this morning because her daughter, her fourth-grade daughter, is receiving a citizenship award at school.
Great, great.
I'm here officially on behalf of the company, Comcast NBC Universal, and a sponsor of Asian Americans Advancing Justice, but actually, the opportunity to recognize and perhaps embarrass Stuart and Pat was too good to pass up, and it's a great personal privilege to me. It is not easy finding role models in this world. Stuart Quo has been a role model for me for nearly four decades, and I hate to say that for both of us, that it's been four decades. As a young lawyer, many of you may know that I was head of public counsel, but there was another young lawyer across town, a year or two ahead of me, who had founded Asian Pacific American Legal Center, the forerunner to Asian Americans Advancing Justice, and he truly was a role model. He was a young lawyer, too. I was a bit younger than he, but he was certainly wiser than I was. And I can say, just as Councilman Rue said, that he stands on the shoulders of Stuart, that I, too, can say that much of the good that I was able to do and public counsel was able to do is because I was smart enough to watch and then emulate Stuart Quo and everything that he did in my formative professional years. You truly have been a role model. You've been that person for so many countless people in this community, and I'm just honored to simply add my voice of thanks for being that person for me and for those in our community. And we, as a person and as a company, were honored to support Advancing Justice and Stuart and Pat, so thank you.[1430.42][1430.42](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Steve. And before I bring up Stuart and Pat, I just want to remind everyone about the Advancing Justice 35th Annual Gala, which is this October 7th. It is a very fun event, and at the gala, you will see the founder of Advancing Justice, Stuart Quo.
October 17th.
Oh, October 17th, I'm sorry. It is 17th. October 17th, there's more time. Get extra 10 days. And at this gala, you will see the founder of Advancing Justice, Stuart Quo, and his wife, Pat Quo, both as receiving the lifetime achievement award for their decades of service in social justice, legal defense, and civil rights. And without further ado, we are lucky enough to be joined by Pat and Stuart Quo, the founder, president, and executive director of the Asian Americans Advancing Justice LA. Stuart, Pat?
Give them a big round of applause.[1488.11][1488.11](APPLAUSE). Welcome to the both of you.
Thank you very much. I asked Pat if she wanted to say a few words, but she said I could, I could talk more today.[1508.21][1508.21](LAUGHS). Councilman Wesson, City Council members, and of course, David Rue, thank you for your leadership and your attention today. We are very pleased that, over 35 years, we've grown to over 105 staff, over 800 volunteers, with a very active board of 30-some-odd people. And so, first of all, let me thank the staff and the board for their tremendous leadership.[1548.01][1548.01](APPLAUSE). We, I'll make this very brief, we have been in the trenches with you. The City Council has been a key supporter of ours through the LA Justice Fund. We also work with the Mayor's Fund and the LA Public Libraries Fund, so we are very interconnected with the city, and we find that to be a great partnership to provide services and advocacy to our community. The last thing I just wanted to point out is that we have these T-shirts, and I just wanted to point out that what we're all about is about justice. We cannot provide justice alone. We have to work with collaborators throughout the city, including with the City Council and the mayor, and so we treasure that partnership because we know that's the only way we can start accomplishing that quest for justice for all. Especially in this time period where we're challenged, we're challenged by the powers that be in the White House and other places. We have to band together, we have to stick together, we have to work together, we have to struggle together to be able to get to that goal of justice for all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you both for your service.[1664.26][1664.26](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Stuart, and thank you, Advancing Justice, for all of your work building a more just and equitable city. So, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, I am proud to present this certificate to Advancing Justice. Thank you, Advancing Justice. Thank you, Stuart.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning, colleagues. Earlier this week, we recognized the accomplishments of Latinos in journalism, art, and food, thanks to Councilwoman Rodriguez, who spearheaded in the Madrina of this year's Latino Heritage Month. But today, I want to highlight the work of Latinos in science, technology, engineering... They are the prime example of proving what I say often, you can't be what you can't see. SHIP's L.A. mission to develop and advance the Latino presence within engineering is the reason so many young Latinos are deciding to enter the fields of science, technology, engineering, and mathematics today. They are ensuring that Latinos are not only present in the sciences, but also leading the way in new technologies and projects. They're intelligent, hard-working, and innovative. SHIP L.A. has developed a robust pipeline emphasizing awareness, access, support, and development for Latinos and Latinas interested in STEM. They are showing young Latinos and Latinas that a career in engineering is viable, fun, and attractive. I can't say without a doubt that this will make an absolute difference in the lives of young people, because the need for a more diverse workforce has never been greater. This body alone proves the importance and success of diversity. It is a prime example of how having people from different backgrounds, cultures, and walks of life can be the bedrock to a thriving and fruitful city. In order for this field to be successful, we need to be a more diverse workforce. I want to introduce someone who has firsthand experience with the difference in, in making a difference in Latinos in STEM, a woman who's breaking the glass ceiling and is demonstrating the importance of Latinos in not only engineering, but in leadership roles. Please help me welcome Judith Ibarra Benchata, the Director of Program and Professional Development for SHIP L.A.
Good morning, Councilmembers. I'm very honored to be here today. My name is Judith Ibarra Benchata, and I'm the Vice President of Operations for the SHIP Los Angeles Chapter. It's very fitting for me to be here today during Hispanic Heritage Month, as we launched it earlier this, this, earlier this week. I want to first thank Councilwoman Martinez for her continued support of our chapter. She is such a phenomenal leader for our community, and to have her continued support is something that we're very grateful for. You know, the vision of SHIP Los Angeles is really simple. It's a world where Latinos, where Hispanic Angelinos are highly valued as influential innovators, scientists, technologists, mathematicians, and engineers. It's a world where these people that are standing here with me today, and many who aren't here today, it's a world that we live every day. Every day, we're using our math and science and technology backgrounds to find solutions to very, very complex problems. And so, having a place where we can get together and share our ideas, share our experiences, is what SHIP L.A. provides to us. And so, it's really important for our organization to think about the future and how we can inspire young people into this career path. The other thing that our organization does is provide a platform for people that are working in this profession to find professional development opportunities to help them grow to the highest levels possible for their, for their careers. So, we're very proud to be the organization to provide that. And as Councilwoman Martinez mentioned, you can't be what you can't see, so I ask that you all see us here today and know that we want to continue the collaboration with the city, and we want to continue to bring this vision that we have to life. So, thank you so very much.
Also, to speak here this morning is SHIP's L.A.'s Vice President of Operation, Amado Galaviz.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Councilwoman Martinez and the rest of the council members. My name is Amado Galaviz. I'm very, very thankful to be here today, as this has been a great achievement on behalf of the SHIP Board and the membership. I, I'd like to get this opportunity to thank the Board, who has done some amazing, amazing work to be able to put SHIP L.A. where we are today, including the membership. We are a group of volunteers that come together to continue promoting the education and the success of Latinos in STEM, and we continue to do that day, day-to-day, as we continue our path and effort. So, thank you very much to everybody, but again, I'd like to thank our Board and our membership today for all the hard work that they've done and that they continue to do, and we are thankful for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Amado. Thank you very much. I would also like to introduce SHIP's CEO, Raquel Tames, to say a few words.
Thank you. Esteemed Councilmembers, good morning. I am honored and thrilled to be here, to have the opportunity to share a few thoughts with you, and so, I appreciate your time and your attention. Oftentimes, when given the opportunity to speak to SHIP members, I share this sentiment with them, and so, I'll take this opportunity to share this with all of you on this larger The Aztecs, the Mayans, the Incas, these proud people are our ancestors, the ancestors of Latinos and Hispanics. We were some of the world's first engineers and scientists and inventors. We are a people of song and music, a people of poetry and literature, a people of warriors and revolutionaries and freedom fighters. Our contributions have changed this city, they have changed the United States, they have changed this world for the better. This is our history, this is our legacy, this is the colorful, powerful, harrowing, haunting, beautiful tapestry that we have woven as a Hispanic community. John F. Kennedy often said, he talked about a torch being passed to a new generation of Americans. Hispanics are that new generation, and John F. Kennedy's message is a timeless one, and yet, one that should feel to all of you thrillingly relevant as Councilmembers of Los Angeles. And so, SHIP National and SHIP L.A. stand ready to work with you, to strategize, and to collaborate, to make the city of Los Angeles the very best that it can be through the contributions of Latinos and Hispanics, and those Hispanics that are in STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I also want to note that our very own Enrique Saldivar is a proud member of SHIP. I know he was going to be here this morning, I'm not sure if he's here or not, but I wanted to make sure everyone knew that. And SHIP L.A., you're coming in strong, so great work, and on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, I want to recognize you for all your contributions and commitment to the Latino community. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Are we looking here?
Hold it, because then I'm going to drop it. Okay, I got it. Drop it a little bit. Okay. Right there. Okay, who are we looking at?
Yeah, I was just like going back and forth.
Is she in the middle? Got it? We're going to head down. Thank you. Amado, got it? You got it?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Please collect all your belongings, follow the council members to the back for some additional photos.
Still got one more, another.
Yes. Thank you. Excellent, we'll probably do that, because they're all going to come right now.
Yeah.
Counselor member Kocorian, you have, you're ready for your presentation? The floor is yours. Thank you.
went back to school at L.A. USD schools, and as parents, when we drop our kids off, we know that they are going to be in good hands with the professional educators at L.A. USD. But we also know that the pathway from childhood through adolescence and into young adulthood is often one that's fraught with great obstacles and challenges, and it doesn't take very much for a young person to fall off the path, and instead of proceeding ahead and realizing their fullest potential, they are at risk often of falling into the clutches of one of those challenges and disrupting the future course of their lives. But more than anyone else, the people, the professionals who are preventing that from happening, day in and day out, the professionals that are helping our young people fulfill their greatest potential and advance to college and beyond, are our public school counselors, who I'm here to recognize with all of you today. So, let's give a hand to our public school counselors throughout the city of Los Angeles. These are our, these are our unsung heroes in our schools. They do extraordinary things for our young people with too few resources and too few people, guiding them through their social and emotional development, helping them to plan their career, their academic careers and their professional careers, dealing with personal tragedies and crises that come along, and all of the, the ups and downs of, of youth. And yet, we know that in the state of California, we're not doing nearly, nearly enough to support the work of our school counselors. California ranks forty-ninth of all of the states in counselor-to-student ratio, forty-ninth out of fifty, and that's a disgrace that we tolerate that in this state. Now, thankfully, here in L.A. USD, the ratio is better than it is statewide, but we still know that the, the folks that are standing behind me here face great challenge. In this district, in L.A. USD, on average, every single classroom, every group of thirty or thirty-five students has at least one child who's in foster care or homeless. These are the challenges that these professionals have to deal with. More than one out of ten students in L.A. USD has special needs, is participating in special education. So, the, the strain that they have to deal with in dealing with these issues and so many more is great, and yet, in too many schools in Los Angeles and throughout California, there are more security guards on campus than there are school counselors, and shame on us for allowing that to happen. These, so, it's a small thing, it doesn't make up for having massively more school counselors on campus, or better pay, or better working conditions, but I hope that by our recognizing these professionals and the counselors that they represent throughout Los Angeles, that we take, we can take a moment to thank them for their work, let them know how appreciated they are, let them know how critically important their work is. You know, in private schools, counselors spend more than half of their time on college counseling and preparation, helping students to decide what college they're going to go to. In our public schools in L.A. USD, they spend about a fifth of their time doing that, because they're dealing with all of these other issues. That inequity is shameful, and it can only be remedied if we have more counselors, more support for them, and, and more, and we demonstrate our appreciation in more tangible ways to our school counselors, and they really will make the difference in children's lives. So, I'm here to thank the counselors here from my district and all of the counselors throughout Los Angeles that they represent, and joining me in doing that today, and I'm, I'm very proud to be able to recognize a lifelong educator himself, our school board member in the East San Fernando Valley, the Honorable Scott Schmerle.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I'm here for two special reasons. Number one, you are my councilperson, so I wouldn't miss this, and number two, before becoming a school board member and a principal and assistant principal, I, too, was a secondary counselor, and I know exactly what these ladies and gentlemen do every single day for our kids, academic counseling, financial counseling, everything you could imagine, from teaching kids to be, teaching kids to be good citizens, proud of themselves, and know how to get help. Their parents are indebted to us, we do it because we love kids, and I certainly, certainly will try to improve the counseling ratio at our school district. So, thank you so much, sir. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much, Scott, and I'd like to ask, next, to come on up and speak, a terrific school counselor at Sun Valley Magnet School, representing the school counselors here, Dr. Harry Bedevian. Harry?
Thank you. Pleasure, pleasure.
Thank you, City Council, for recognizing the school counselors of Los Angeles and the work that our group does for the children of Los Angeles each and every day. It's truly an honor to be here. It is, uh, it is a moment that a lot of school counselors standing behind me have waited for. Oftentimes, our group is overshadowed by the bigger groups of educators, and as Councilman Kocorian said, the school counselors of L.A. Unified really are unsung heroes. They are the hidden gems of the district, and the, the support that you provide, the recognition that you give us, the decreasing of the ratios, will only benefit the children of Los Angeles even more. So, thank you so much, on behalf of the school counselors, again, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Harry. So, with us today, we have counselors from Sun Valley Magnet School, Walter Reed Middle School, North Hollywood High School, Grant High School, we have the assistant principals of both Grant and North Hollywood High, and I think also, we have with us representing a school board member, Kelly Gones, we have her staff member, Carrie Onofre, and as I close, we're going to present certificates in the back, save a little bit of time, but I do want to just say in closing, we've had a national dialogue recently about keeping schools safe and about school violence and school shootings, and the solution that some have offered is to put more guns in schools, to arm teachers, to arm administrators. I think a better solution, instead of putting more guns in schools, is to put more of these school counselors in schools to fight against bullying and violence and all the other things that they have to face with. Members, thank you very much.
Mr. Kocorian?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We do have one speaker on the queue, Mr. Abus Gaiano.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Kocorian. It's rare that we have this opportunity to recognize the men and women of L.A. Unified School District in this body, so I appreciate you doing this, this morning, and I come from a family of teachers. My wife and two sisters are with L.A. Unified School District, so we appreciate the work that you do, and as a senior lead officer with LAPD, countless times, I came to our school counselors in, in the San Pedro area, because we've seen, in my experience, a lot of these kids, as Paul mentioned, have been, a lot of traumatic experiences, not only in their families, but also in their not only in their families, but also in their communities. And I'm reminded by my sister Michelle, who's a STEAM Magnet Coordinator at Dana Middle School, that now, your responsibility and roles are spilling into the classroom teachers. Today, they're being trained on the trauma-informed individuals, helping students with adverse childhood experiences. And we thank you for leading that in each of the campuses throughout our school district and the heart that you show and the compassion for our kids and our students because they truly need you. So thank you. God bless you and the work that you do. To our school board member who's representing us, thank you very much for your leadership on the school board as well. Thank you, Mr. Kocorian.
Thank you, members.
Wait, I've got, no, there's one more.
Okay. You let me know when you're ready, Mr. President. Welcome.
I'll excuse you. No. So this is actually from me. I was actually with our board member, Scott Schmerleson, this morning. So I know he heard me mention this. At a school we were at, I can't thank the counselors enough for, and I don't think we've even scratched the surface with what you've been able to do and what you continue to do. You are truly, by far, our first responders. You were the first to deal with the most important crises in a young person's life that has virtually nobody else to turn to most of the time. Most of these kids are on the edge. Their parents have probably already fallen off the edge, if they have the parents at all. Many of them are going to school and they're homeless and living out of vehicles, under bridges, with no support. In fact, many of them are even abused. And this is your population. These are your constituencies. These are the most vulnerable people in society that you're dealing with each and every day. And I say this to you because I was one of them. And it was a school administrator who had took me under his wing and turned my life around. I would not, would not be here today. And I don't mean sitting in this chair. I mean, I don't know that I would even be here today, had it not been for people like you. And so from the bottom of my heart, I'm just truly, truly appreciative and grateful for what you do every day. Paul, thank you for bringing them here. Thanks for recognizing what they do day in and day out. They have the toughest jobs of all of us, and they take it home with them every day. They see it every day. And you never get immune to it. And thank you. Appreciate it. Let's give him another round of applause.
Thank you, Mr. President.
And with that, you're dismissed. Yes. Okay, so colleagues, we're going to go ahead and take item number seven up. Seven up? Anybody get that? Never mind. Okay, so we're going to take item seven. Yes, Mr. Blumenfield.
Alex, we have before us today someone who we all know, someone who we have seen in action. Adele has been, he has been a part of this city for more than a quarter century, and he has been doing an amazing job in sanitation. And today, we are here to take up his nomination. We grilled him quite a bit in Public Works Committee as he has been nominated by our mayor to be the new general manager for Street Services. And he really spoke to us about how he's going to take this in a new direction. He's going to listen to folks. He's going to take the innovation that he has really made his mark in sanitation and bring that innovation to us here in Street Services. So I'd like to just start it by asking you to tell us a little bit about your plans for the future as our general manager and to let my colleagues know that I'm 110% on board and urge an I vote. So with that, the floor is yours and the question is that.
Great. Good morning, Councilman Blumenfield. Thank you and thank you for the committee, Public Works and the Anglification Committee, for your confirmation and support and your kind words. Thank you. Mr. President, honorable councilmembers, thank you for what you do every day, your leadership and vision for this great city. And I hope with my role here that I continue to provide the service that this city deserves every day. As an immigrant and a first-generation college student, college graduate, I'm living the American dream in this great city and most generous and welcoming city on earth. I want to thank the mayor for his nomination for me and your support. I want to thank also every Angelino for what you stand for in this great city. So thank you for that. You know, Los Angeles, a world-class city, deserves a world-class street network and street services. Our streets are the most visible image of our city. So as we look forward to the 2022 Super Bowl, 2026 World Cup, and 2028 Olympics, we owe it to each of our residents and businesses and visitors to make our street networks safe, green, and mobile, starting today. You have my commitment to that. With your guidance and the commitment and the hard work of the women and men of Street Services, the collaboration of our sister agencies and sister departments, partnership with the community, all communities across the city, I'm confident that we can provide high-quality, efficient, and equitable service across our great city. Together, I think we'll transform and we'll work very hard to transform the Street Services into a world-class organization that sets the benchmark for resiliency, efficiency, innovation, and quality. We will build bridges internally and externally. We will develop and implement stakeholder process to develop a comprehensive plan for street renewal and preservation. And we will focus on failed streets. We will focus on failed streets, including concrete streets. That's something that we have in our commitment, and we will go in and address that. We will develop an index to ensure we measure the improvements that we're making to our streets, not just by miles, by how good the streets are across our city. We'll make our streets mobile, accessible, with focus on increasing pothole repair, enhancing our street preservation and construction efforts, increasing our repairs of our sidewalks and bikeways. We'll optimize and enhance our street sweeping program to keep our neighborhoods clean while protecting our waterways and the environment. We'll implement measures to increase biodiversity, mitigate climate change by restoring our urban forests, making our streets cool, and implementing energy-efficient and environmentally-friendly practices. We will develop a strategic and comprehensive urban forestry plan. We will build more complete and green streets that provide multi-benefits and leverages more resources. We'll integrate state-of-the-art technologies throughout our operation. We'll focus on innovation, integration, transparency. We'll find ways to find streets that are failing before we get the call, before somebody trips and falls. We will do that. We will find, we'll be proactive to ensure that. We will upgrade our website. We'll provide the tools to have better communication between us and the community and the community and us. We'll make our streets and the streets' operations more efficient and smart. We'll partner with our labor partners to increase our targeted local hires and to make the workplace more productive and rewarding. We will provide more gender equity and diversity across our bureau. We'll engage the business groups, the environmental advocates, the various community groups, the neighborhood councils, starting tomorrow with the Neighborhood Congress throughout our operation because I believe, as you all believe, that every voice in this city counts. Each one of us can make a difference. I can do things that people that cannot do, but there's other people that can do things that I cannot do. But I know by us coming together, we can make a huge difference. My goal is to build on collaboration. I've done that throughout my career, whether it's One Water LA Plan or renewing our sewer system. I was able to bring people across departments, across the city, to collaborate and move us forward. I will bring that same commitment, same hard work to my department in Street Services and provide us a great, great street system in Los Angeles. I'm very proud of everyone. I want to thank all my friends and supporters that are here, from Street Services, from sanitation, from across the city. I want to thank them for the support and their love. But also, I want to thank my family, my wife Lubna and my son Jad, who are here today for the support and love and giving me the time to serve this great city of angels. What you'll get from me is somebody that would listen, will collaborate, will work hard, bring new ideas, and transform this department, this city, the city that we can all be proud of. And within five years, this will be not only the best-run department in the city, it will be the best Streets Department in the whole nation. So thank you.
Councilwoman Martinez. I'm soft-spoken.
You're very soft-spoken, sir. I have to say, I think it's great that you're here before us, Adele. Not only because of your 29-year commitment to our city, but you've earned this opportunity, not because of your longevity, but because of your commitment and your ability to do the work. Over the past couple of years that we've worked together, I've got to say you are one of the most innovative, creative people that I've ever worked with. Not only do you step up to the plate, you take responsibility, and you're a real problem solver. And I think that's what we need more than ever in our city. I know a couple of weeks ago, we had a very interesting discussion in committee. I think we can go back and forth about public policy and what should be done and what shouldn't. And I think it's up to this council and this mayor to continue to have those debates. But that should never take away from the talent that we have in our workforce. And sir, you've earned your keep. You've earned it through your hard work and commitment to the city. I want to congratulate you for an amazing job on sanitation. I think your talent is desperately needed in the Bureau of Street Services, and I want to congratulate you and your wonderful family that I know is here this morning. You're a wonderful man, and I know you're going to make us proud. But more than anything, I think you've earned this opportunity. And I think you need to do everything you can to continue to bring us into the 21st century and make sure that we are meeting the needs of our constituents. You heard this from me over and over again. We have a desperate need to fix our streets and our sidewalks. Our constituents need that. They're asking for it. And I think you're the guy for the right job. So thank you very much for being here. It gives me a great honor to vote in support of you becoming the next general manager for Street Services. So with that, thank you very much, Mr. President, and congratulations.
All right. Thank you very much. Seeing no other speakers on the queue, colleagues, we'll go ahead and open the roll. And just go up, 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 right in the nick of time. Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too just want to welcome Adele. I know you're going to do an outstanding, great job in Street Services. Just take a little exception with you. You talked about the importance of getting the streets ready for the Olympics and for a number of other projects we have coming up. We've got to get them ready for tomorrow, for tomorrow morning, you know. And I appreciate that we've had many conversations, appreciate your commitment to making sure that the streets throughout the city are attended to. You know, sometimes, some areas of the city don't get the attention they deserve and need. And so we're just proud to work with you. I know you're going to do an outstanding job. You and your team stepping up, stepping forward, bringing new ideas, creative ideas, solving problems, but more importantly, delivering services that our citizens deserve and demand. So thank you. We look forward to working with you.
All right, now, seeing a fair and final offer to anybody who wishes to speak, we'll go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll. Adele, you ready? Tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Congratulations, our new general manager, Street Services. Now get to work. Just kidding. All right, yes, all right. It's my pep speech.
Items 11 and 19, amending motions have been posted and distributed for council's consideration.
Great. Okay, we'll go ahead and open the roll on those items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please. Yeah, we'll go ahead and do a public comment. Would be great. Thank you. Herman? Armando, come on up.
What is the urgency of today? Well, the urgency is to fix LA with these relative improvements for street lighting and maintenance. We have that in the area of Venice Beach. We also have that in CD2, which is Paul Kocorian's district, shining the light on a mound with no bar license. Then we go into item three, one and only good-looking mommy here, who talks about improvements for Roscoe Boulevard. I approve. After all, mommy needs to shine good in the light. And what about item four, Whackly Drive off of Herkensmer? Is that German for beer? Well, we definitely need more lighting on issues on beer. But let's go to the real agenda, that of an urgency on items under shared mobility. What am I implying when I say share mobility? Isn't that what the presentation before us was about? When we talked about fixing roads and the infrastructure of our streets and sidewalks? We definitely know that Mr. Haganliki or whatever the hell his name is, but I'm trying my best to say it right. Someone in the audience can help me? But anyways, authorizing our municipal code to reflect the Departments of Transportation for a qualified pilot program. Well, that operator should be myself, for I definitely know how to work the DOJ to get you to build, 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 like I did off of the corridor of Soto Marango. And then we have Housing Community Investment Department. What does that mean? It means that the habitat for humanity in greater Los Angeles needs more money. We need money to build housing for those who are at a disadvantage, inconvenience, for land and subject land approval to build under HHH. Not like Jocelyn Dworky did to steal money from the HHH, simply $900,000. But let us instruct that the city attorney, Mr. Keeblerman up there, Fabel, for the record, ensure that the ordinance and sales of property...
All right, you have your one minute of general.
Now, under motion 50 of last week, we're still here to present our rebuttal and argument that we're not going to be suppressed of our right to enter any public facility. We're not going to have anyone deter us from participating in public meetings. You could subject us to be removed from one meeting, but altogether, not from a public paid building that we, the legislative body, have control on. In addition to that, why is it that Mitch Englander has returned from his so-called repetitive discourse of rehabilitation? Is that something to talk about? No! Let's talk about why Jose Wezar is not here. Jose Wezar's retaliation harassment of his employees, protected by Herman Jason Weston, once again for sexual misconduct.
Mr. Previn? Eric Previn? Okay, items 1, 6, 23, and 24.
Thank you, sir. It's Eric Previn from Studio City, speaking on behalf of myself in this section. I'll start with 24, since I think everybody is interested in the scooters. The coding it as a sharing, whatever, it's very hard. People don't read that as a scooter. A little while ago, we asked the city attorney, Michael Nagel and Sleda Reynolds, come back with an ordinance that would start out a trial period, and then we'll evaluate those companies that want to participate and try to get the levels right of these scooters. Obviously, if they're lying all over the place, it's not working. Obviously, if they're lying all over the place, it's not working. There's different methods. Our neighborhood council did, I'm speaking on behalf of myself, hear from Lime. They came out and gave us their spiel, which involves taking a picture when you're completed your use of the scooter, so that you can, the company can see that it's parked in the right area. You have to upload that so that it doesn't keep billing you. That's great, as long as they haven't used a card that is tapped out at a low number. The question about, you know, in the ordinance, Mr. Nagel used the word protecting the health and safety of the public. I'm having a hard time reconciling that with Governor Brown's decision to not make it so that helmets are required, and how these language says that these, Bloomingfield was very, and Krikorian, very diligent in noting the liability possibly, and saying that, you know, that they have to provide complete indemnification to the city. Now, there's an article in Harper's Magazine this month about the sharing economy, and it's called Share the Pain. The author, Walter Kern, K-I-R-N, was riding one of these skip scooters, I believe, in Washington DC, having a great time, getting the sights in, this is a good market to try it out, and then what happened was he fell off on his face. So, that was not good. And I think that though we are very concerned about not having additional legal bills upstairs on the 10th floor, sir, in either budget and finance or public safety, by the way, there were about a dozen vacations of city property on today's agenda, one of which is 11A that was amended. And I just want to reach out to Mr. Weezer, because that man is really getting through the backlog of vacations of city property effectively, sir. And I think that the timing might have something to do with the opening of the, what we call the campaign finance fundraising window. Now, that all took place in your committee, sir, up in public safety. You were not, I guess you were in rehab, but Mr. O'Farrell, who does a very nice job of brokering council districts that he's not a part of, and applicants who are being screwed and squeezed by that council district, to go discuss it in private, I don't know. I feel like today's a great day, because we've got Michael By down here, we've got Arnie Bergoff, we've got Lime, Lyft, Burt, all of these folks are here to kind of get this ordinance rolling in a way that makes the people feel good.
Start your one minute for general.
Sure, sir, don't clamor, I'll get there. My one minute in general public comment is very simple. The Ethics Commission made some regulation changes, and today in Rules Committee, under the great leadership of David Rue, who's not on that committee, and Kern Price, who's not on that committee, but sitting in the middle was the gubernador, Herb Wesson. They, they heard from the public, and the public was very, very clear. The threshold of raising up to 25,000 to get matching funds is way too high. Even the people who are all working for you said so. The other thing is that the debate requirement needs to be crystal clear. Two in a primary, two in a general, and there is no town hall, because town hall means it's Englander, and I invited them, they didn't come. That doesn't cut it for the people of Los Angeles, this is public money. And finally, the 500 good signatures that are clerk certified by the city clerk ought to count for access into the program instead of that threshold. So, you've got essentially a stipend, qualifying signature stipend, call it 15, 20 grand. But sir, I know you're a big leader in ethics, so please push that through, talk to Wesson, convort with your people.
Your time's up, Mr. Previn.
Thank you, sir, good luck.
Good luck to you. Spindler. Wayne, come on up.
Yeah, he doing very good. That's good, Mr. Fabel, you got him on the medication the right way. So, let's see here. What we got here? A innocent Washington street lighting district fool. Deny the protest. Deny the protest. No, we're not going to deny the protests, we're going to accept the protests under the First Amendment. Thank you, Stephen Rhodey. CD5. And we got ourselves the 11th District Councilman, known as the drug addict. Yeah, and that's what happens when you snoop too much coke, fool. Now, number two, we got CD2. And of course, it's Paul Krikorian at it again, taxing the rich for lights. Why are we doing this? The rich can't afford any more taxes, right? Right. Number two. Number three. Taxing the poor for goddamn lights for the drug addicts and the pimps and the pushers in CD6, Roscoe Boulevard and Burnet Avenue. Why? Why are property tax owners paying for lighting for drug addicts and drug pimps? I don't understand it. You need lighting to see what you're buying? Be it a bitch or a fifth? And that's why she need in the ghetto more of that? And she gonna tax those poor, poor goddamn property owners not selling no drugs to benefit the drug trafficking? Number three. And number four, Rue, rapist Rue. And he's raping Clarissa Avenue and Commonwealth Avenue for more than money. Keep up the good work, Mr. City Attorney. Keep violating Prop 218. And then CD13, the criminal, Mitchell Farrell, has finally arrived. Yes, he's on par with Garcetti, he's as corrupt as Garcetti. And I really respect that, because I didn't think you could fill Twinkle Toe Shoes, but you did well. Keep stealing, keep stealing. Good, good, good. Then we got lots more bullshit to talk about. 23, we got ordinances. My puppet would go, no. And then 24, the mobility device pilot program. The only mobility device we want is to get the fuck out of the city. And now we got maps, maps and maps. CD3, Bob Blooming stupid, no. Now, we get to the jackass. Mike Fear is a jackass. And who says that? Stephen Rhodey says he's a doo-doo, that Mike Fear the jackass, because what they're going to do on Tuesday is do something a jackass does, passes a goddamn law that's a jackass. Because Mike Fear is a goddamn jackass, because Mike Fear is filing pretextual amendments against free speech. And all you got to do is read on City Watch, Stephen Rhodey says, you can't do it. And Stephen Rhodey warned you. Well, you know what that means? When you're the 15 smallest little dick cunt children in the goddamn world, you gonna pass it on Tuesday, and I'm going to be here to support it. I'm going to be here to support it, and I'm going to wear a special outfit on Tuesday to support it, and you're going to love it. And you're going to love how meetings are going to be. We're going to make everything so family goddamn friendly, you're going to love it. Finally, Mike Fear, you goddamn jackass. Thank you, Mike Fear, jackass.
Okay, if you're going to continue to disrupt this meeting, you're going to be asked to leave. Have a seat. And that includes you, Mr. Herman, too. Philip? No longer here? Okay. Mike Greenspan?
Happy New Year, you scab rabbis. Mike Greenspan, creator of the perfect slogan, "Unionize the Synagogues, They Can Afford It." I'm going to go in a different order. It was listed here as 23, 24, 25, but I'm going to go in the reverse order of 25, 24, 23. And as we look at 25 on the maps, the final map of track number 73177, located at 20600 to 20620, West Roscoe Boulevard, north of Lanark Street. Obviously, the builder, subdivider, Meritage Homes, has paid over 28,000, almost 29,000 for the fees, done a good job of buying it. I'd like to know, and those were probably two single-family residences, now what will be the density? How many homes are they building? Now, it says on this thing, no community impact statement, none submitted. How many units? How many houses are they building on that? After all, would like to know. Now, let's go to the fiscal impact of item 24. None submitted by the city attorney, neither city administrator office, nor the chief legislative analyst. You have a habit of not submitting the fiscal impact reports on a lot of things, and I'm not saying I'm for or against it, I just like to know what these things cost. After all, it is our money. I mean, I realize people like Paul Coretts thinks money grows on trees, but it doesn't. It really, it's money we earn. And couldn't our city attorneys do something to earn their keep, getting 100,000 or 185,000 for a nice haircut up there?
Can you go back to the topic?
Well, I'm just saying, I want them to do their job, so we know what-
I would like you to stay on the agenda.
Now, let's go to item 23, with the Habitat for Humanity, where we are probably giving a nice sweetheart deal. I mean, here, we haven't even come up to Halloween or Thanksgiving, and ho, 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 it's Christmas time, with Habitat for Humanity. Probably underpaying on a property, I'm sure it's worth a lot more than 159,000. And of course, it says, from 6B of subsections, stipulate that the qualified home buyer may be of low or moderate income family. May, and probably will not be, is a better description of it. After all, it's just some bait and switch, and we, the people, are paying for this gentrification project. Okay, now going to general public comment. Okay. Recently, Herb, help for Mr. Herman. Recently, Herb Wesson said that Mr. Herman needs psychiatric help. And give me the full Jewish Catholic yelp trip, I caused it when I said, so let Mr. Herman sing, but give the Grammy to Carmelita Pittman, for we have no sex in our marriage. Mr. Herman never got over it, and therefore, let me recommend a crackpot Jewish psychiatrist just for Mr. Herman, Dr. Hugo. If you took the long letters of his Jewish Argentinean name and stood him on the side, it would be bigger than him, because he's a midget. KTLA's Jessica Holmes is 5'1", and she's the jolly green giant compared to-
Please stick to items under the purview of this body only.
Dr. Hugo.
Items under the purview of this body.
Mr. Herman needing psychiatric help is-
Not for items under the purview of this body. Okay, Herman, you've already disrupted this meeting, been given warning, please escort Herman out. Hold his time. Are you done? Okay, thank you very much. Herman, you're gone, thank you. Thank you. We've asked you not to disrupt this meeting before you continue to yell out. Thank you very much. Continuing to disrupt this meeting while he's yelling out. Have a nice day, Armando. See you later. Goodbye. Thank you. You and your little dog, too. All right, continue to yell out while he's walking out the hall and disrupting this meeting. So, next speaker, please. Richie? No longer here? Okay. Is there Mr. Santana here? No longer here. I think a number of people filled out cards at the beginning of the meeting that were here. Ms. McAllister, I know you're here, I see you. Come on up.
Thank you. Okay, I'm on 23, 28, right? Okay, now 23, you're going to sell this property at 9513 South Spring Street for a single-family home? And my question is, where is the HHH money that you're supposed to be using to build this housing? Now, we keep talking about selling homes and going, look at this property to see if we can do this, you're supposed to be building. And remember, I have the addresses, I drove by 10 of them, and only two, Herb Wesson and O'Farrell, are building. The rest of you, I don't know what you're doing, sitting on all that money, but you're supposed to be building. Also, I want to know what houses have liens? You took the people's names off the agendas, you used to list those housing, those houses that had liens, you took them off the agenda, because I'm always talking about that 250% fine you put on people. So, I want those houses with liens put back on the agenda. Don't take them off the agenda, we want to know who those people are, where they live. Number 28, you want a million in revenue bonds for Herb Wesson's 10th ward. Now, I go to Herb Wesson's ward, and I've been told by the people that Herb is moving in white folks, giving them Section 8 housing, and moving out the blacks. They got blacks laying on the ground, right in his ward, and he's moving in white people, giving them Section 8, and they're moving into that 10th ward. I wish he was here, but I hope his son give him the message. We're not going to tolerate that crap. We built this country, my people. You got 20,000 black people laying on Skid Row, and got all these illegal aliens here, and I'm asking people, why are the illegal aliens living in the affordable housing? Because they're illegal children on the lease, and they're supposed to be citizens. So, you smuggling in all these illegals, and the babies that drop out of these illegal women, you're making them automatic citizens. That was for slaves, okay? That's not for illegal aliens who break into this nation. It was for slaves. And we catch any of them at the voting booth in 2020, they're going to be arrested, and after they get out of prison, they're going to be deported. So, don't think they're going to be voting around here. Now, my public comment is, number one, I want my people off of Skid Row. I want all 20,000 of them off of Skid Row. We got those Jews down there owning those shelters, the wine garden, all of that, and they're making money off of my people. And my people are disappearing down there, too, because they're killing them and selling their organs and selling them to Israel. So, don't tell me, I know what's going on, I get out and talk to the people. You sleeping next to somebody one night, the next, you've been sleeping next to them for a year, and then the next morning, you wake up, they're gone, never to be seen again. See, I know, I know the enemy, and we're going to crack down on this crap on a spiritual level. Penalty for those attorneys up there that's not, that are not attorneys, making 200,000 a year. I want those people to pay back those salaries, we want them off of that payroll, and we want some people to go to prison. The people who put them on the payroll, and we want them to pay that money back. Like I said, they have to pay that money back. And these Asians who came in here, we want these nail shops, we want them so that they cannot beat up on black people, and we want them certified. Anybody working in a nail shop must have a license.
Shaheen? The one minute for general public comment.
Thank you very much. My name is Shaheen. I'm from District 9, council member, current price is district. I've elected him twice, I've elected most of you people here also. I've been serving this country for 40 years, I was a supplier for City of Los Angeles. I've made you guys a lot of money, and a very cheap deal I've given you. And right now, I'm getting kicked out of my apartment building, which I bought, I've lived there for 17 years. My property was illegally sold, my attorneys never did the paperwork, they were going to sue the bank, which has been making a lot of mistake chase. And the courtroom is full of people like me. Attorneys never did the paperwork, then they said they will, I'll never have to go through Chapter 13. They dragged me to Chapter 13, I would fly in Chapter 13, I would have no problem. They never filled the paperwork again there, and their community went and bought my property for pennies on the dollar. My property is over 1.3 million, four-plex, right behind council member prices, 42nd place, and now I'm getting kicked out without even giving a proper notice.
Thank you very much. Dr. Tom Williams?
Yes, Mike, I would like to continue, please go for-
Thank you, ma'am, that was the one minute for general public comment. Thank you. Next speaker? He's no longer here? Okay. Gil Freedon? I'm going to call the other speakers as well. Judy West and Kathy Peters. Rose Watson? If you're all here, come on up. If you're not, we'll take your name off the queue if I don't see you.
Hey there.
Okay.
Thank you very much. My name is Gil Freedon. I've been a certified financial planner for eight years, I've worked in financial institutions for 17 years, and I'm petrified that the majority of our society has no savings account and that the government's lack of support for that vulnerable community. I arrived this morning to speak at the Rules Committee in support of items two and three, so that we could encourage you to lower the maximum match. Leaving any dollar amount static since 1993 is bonkers. I've had long client relationships with many millionaires, and of course, I know many non-millionaires. And given this experience, I know without a shadow of a doubt that giving a voice to people in politics with lower wealth is vital to democracy. When we have the power to facilitate, when you have the power to facilitate candidates with lower wealth to get their names on the ballot, you must do it. That is the ultimate in patriotism. Thank you.
Henry Gambell? Henry, no longer here? Okay. Okay. All right, so that includes all the general public comments. We're gonna go ahead and close general public com... Oh, yes, Mike. Come on up, Mike. Sorry, missed your name.
I'm the Red Chief Hunt. As we know, Susan Segal granted my lawsuit in part and denied it in part. She found a tourist illegally pretextual arrest from the city and things like that.
So, again, you're on items twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-six? If you could speak, speak to those items.
No, wait. I just signed up for general public.
Just your, okay, I'm sorry. Then just your one minute for general public comment. I'm sorry, apologize. Go ahead.
Um, but, but here's what I gotta say again. Steven Rhodey's getting ready to come after you guys. I was right there in the federal court when the judge says that, um, you guys can't kick people out of the meetings, just like you guys do. Uh, number two, like I was, I was getting back onto the pretextual arrest that Susan Segal granted, me and things like that. I'm a Ninth Circuit winner. I had nine federal judges ruling in my favor, and my birthday's October ninth. Those are triple nines. You guys oughta start listening to what, what the people say. Mitchell Farrell, please listen. I happen to kinda like you. At, at, at the end of the day, I kinda like you, so, um, please vote no on, on, on this thing on Tuesday, because I was in the courtroom when the judge said that you couldn't do it. That was Judge Dean Pragerston in the Dow versus the City of Los Angeles, Dow, Dow, and Dog. But anyways, getting back to the pretextual arrest, you guys, um, the city has never beat me in anything. The lawsuit is very serious, you guys. You guys keep on, keep doing the same thing over and over again. Hunt versus the City of Los Angeles.
That concludes now general public comment. Thank you very much. We're gonna go ahead and go into item eleven, called special by Mr. Coretts. You wish to speak on it?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to point out that even though I think we're making some effort to improve safety, that just because the state made some changes and no longer requires helmets and other items that would allow this to function safely, doesn't mean that making it legal makes it safe. I still doubt whether these can operate appropriately, and even though I think it's an improvement, I think we would be better off not allowing them to, to function as they currently operate. So, I'm going to oppose this. I won't say that the companies aren't working with us. I met with, with Byrd yesterday, as a matter of fact, and went over some of the dangers, and they actually have some plans to try and improve things, so I credit them for trying to make them as safe as possible. I'm just not sure that, uh, in any way, this could be made safe and a positive for the City of Los Angeles.
Mr. Kocorian?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to follow on Mr. Coretts's comments, we, we did make a lot of progress on the policymaking, and as I said the last time when this came up, this is really an example, I think, of what we should be doing when we tackle complicated, difficult policy. And I think the debate we had last time was very positive, very healthy, and moved us in a, in a positive direction. And I know that the Department of Transportation is right now working on additional rules and regulations for implementation that will hopefully continue to advance us in that positive direction. But I do feel that it is imperative for the council to be able to at least have an opportunity to weigh in on those rules and regulations, and to have an opportunity to see what they are before permits begin issuing. So, I would suggest, and I am in fact going to move, that item twenty-four be amended to add a third instruction, which would instruct the Department of Transportation to transmit the rules and regulations for this program to the clerk for placement in the council file on this matter prior to the issuance of any permits to a shared mobility device operator. So that council has an opportunity, won't require that it come back, but if any council member sees those rules and regulations on the council file and determines that they're not acceptable, or they're not following the counsel of the city attorney, or they're not consistent with the discussions that we had here in council, that that would give an opportunity for us at least to have that review before the permits are, are issued.
Right. Seconded by Mr. Bustaino.
Great, thank you.
All right, Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I certainly am a fan of the shared mobility devices, and I'm supportive of this motion moving forward as amended. But as a member who represents a portion of the city that is frequently overlooked and under, uh, well, overlooked, we'll just say, I'm concerned that this technology, uh, I'm concerned if this technology does not roll out in communities like mine. I know frequently, there is a tendency to forego certain areas, and so, I know there are some language that provides an incentive for companies to provide these devices in, in underserved, quote, underserved areas, and I totally support that process. But I still think we need to double-check that. And so, when the rules and regs are finalized and rolled out, I'd like to instruct the LA DOT to report back in thirty days on the incentive program for disadvantaged communities to see if, in fact, the incentive is working. Uh, you know, we certainly can take, take action, not take action, but rather than just put some language in to say that communities are gonna be, underserved communities will be served, without some follow-up, I think, is, is just not a good policy. So, I support this totally. I support us moving forward. I support the incentive programs for underserved areas. We'd just like to make sure that we get some report back from DOT on the effectiveness of this effort, and if not, what we should be doing to, to ensure a greater distribution of these vehicles.
Okay, seeing no other speak?
Excuse me, a second for that motion?
Yeah, a second.
Yeah, seconded by Mr. Coretts. Okay, we have, the motion's now before us. We'll go ahead, and that includes both of the friendly amendments. We'll go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Oh, yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't work with your... I pressed it, but I'm a no.
So, please, record Mr. Coretts's vote as a no vote.
For the record, then the vote is ten ayes, one no, and it is as amended.
Great, as amended. Thank you very much. Okay, next items, please.
And for the record, the ordinances will carry over one week to September twenty-eighth.
Okay. Any other items? Do we have any other items before us? Oh, we have one through eight. I'm sorry, one through six.
Actually, the votes to be, that are available for council's consideration, first would be items one through six.
So, we'll go ahead and open the roll on one through six. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved, and they were all ordinances, so...
And then item twenty-one.
Okay. Please open the roll on item twenty-one. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with on twenty-one, per Councilmember Bustaino, without objection, then that'll be the order.
And then items twenty-three, twenty-five, and twenty-six.
Okay, those items are now before us, colleagues. We'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Okay, we have motions for posting and referral.
And excuse me, Mr. President, just for the record, all items with ordinances will be carried over one week to Friday, September twenty-eighth.
Great, okay, thank you very much. And with that, we have motions for posting and referral. We'll post and refer those. Colleagues, do we have any announcements? Yes, yes, yes. Ms. Martinez?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanna invite my colleagues and anyone watching this on TV to the Van Nuys Arts Festival that we'll be having on September twenty-eighth at six PM at the Van Nuys Civic Center. We're gonna have a visual forest installation, a lot of food. We have so many artists and musicians in the San Fernando Valley. There's almost two million people there, and I think it's just an opportunity for us to bring the community together, more than anything, to showcase the talent in the San Fernando Valley. So, I wanna just invite everyone to the Second Annual Van Nuys Arts Festival, taking place in Van Nuys, right behind Van Nuys City Hall at the Van Nuys Civic Center on September twenty-eighth at six PM. Thank you.
Mr. Wesson?
It does. Look at this.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. Just on behalf of the President of Public Works, Kevin James, and myself, and every other Cleveland Brown football fan in America, I wanna announce that the Cleveland Browns, my hometown, my team, won their first football game in six-hundred-and-thirty-five days. So, we are on the move. Look out, rest of the NFL, and a shout-out to Baker Mayfield, our quarterback.
Wow, wow, all right. Well, I was just gonna say the same thing, Mr. Kocorian, and that is way outside the jurisdiction of this body. Seeing no other announcements, Mr. Bustaino, you got an announcement? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. O'Farrell, and then...
Yeah, go ahead. It's first. It's okay. All right, if I can. Mr. President, just to know, Herb, that our beloved council member in Cleveland, Matt Zone, wanted me to share with you, a virtual high-five for you. They were, they were fired up in Cleveland last night. Colleagues, one of the premier boat shows in Southern California region is coming to the LA Harbor this weekend. Four-day boating event features boats of all types, along with sixty booths, offering accessories and gadgets, educational seminars, as well as food trucks, and a craft beer garden at the Gerberlo Marina way there. Expect to see cruisers, sport fishers, sailboats, catamarans. Youth twelve and under accompanied by adult are free, and military receive a five-dollar discount with military ID. So, I wanna thank the Port of Los Angeles and the producers of the LA Harbor Boat Show that put on this event each and every year. We're expecting thousands of people to come down to the waterfront. Hope you join us. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, tomorrow evening is the eleventh Frog Town Art Walk, beginning at six PM in Elysian Valley in the Thirteenth District. It's free and open to the public. There are thirty-seven venues, fifty artists, three stages with music, a literary lounge, and an interactive light installation stretching one-half mile along the Los Angeles River, pedicabs, live screen printing with the great artist Leo Limone, and self-help graphics, and dance exhibits at First Impressions. Like I said, it's the eleventh annual to highlight the great works and the great evolution of the Los Angeles River and our cultural recesses, our cultural resources along the river, and I'm a proud sponsor of this annual cultural event in the Thirteenth District, and I hope to see everyone there. And we'll have an information booth there as well, and deal with constituent services the whole evening. So, we invite everyone to come, join us, enjoy the festivities, and have a great time at this wonderful annual event.
Thank you very much. Joe, adjourning motions. If we can get everybody to please rise for adjourning motions. Mr. Bustaino?
Thank you, Mr. President. One of our team members from CD fifteen lost her mother a few days ago. Colleagues, we'd like to adjourn in memory of Rosa Lucido, who passed away peacefully on Tuesday, September eighteenth, and the mother of Sandra Chiara Mataro, who is part of our team, the CD fifteen family. Rosa Lucido was, was born in nineteen forty-one and lived a long and happy life. She's the beloved wife of the late Salvatore Lucido, loving and devoted mother to Dominic, the late Maria Grazia, and our Sandra, who works for us. Rosa was the adoring nonna to Megan, Sammy, Allison, and Brandon, sister to Nifna, Nina, Domenico, and Pietro, sister-in-law to Pasquale, the late Pietro, Joe, and Antonio, caring aunt to all her nieces, nephews, and cousins. Rosa, she lived in Canada, and every time she visited Sandra and Donnie, she was just so warm and kind and always asked for, to see others and spend quality time with her family and friends in, in San Pedro. I do wanna share something that Sandra wanted to, to highlight and memorialize her mother. Sandra says, "My mom was a devoted mother to her entire family, devoted aunt, devoted sister, sister-in-law. This was evident in the way she cared for my sister Maria for nine years during her illness." Sandra says, "There was never a day that went by that my brother Dominic and I felt neglected. She would be sure to come home every, early every day and prepare a home-cooked meal for her family. Her kids and grandkids were the apple of her eyes. We will miss her more than words can say." Sandra also wants to give a special thanks to the Intensive Care Unit at St. Joseph's Hospital in Canada for their kindness and care. So, to Sandra and the entire family, our thoughts and prayers are with you. Rosa Lucido, may she rest in peace. Thank you.
Colleagues, looking to my right. Yes, Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that we adjourn in the memory of Pastor Aaron D. Iverson. He was called to the Lord on Monday of this week. He was a graduate of UCLA and attended the USC Graduate School of Religion and Social Ethics, earning his master's in theology from the Fuller Seminary in nineteen eighty-two. On December eighth, nineteen eighty-five, he was installed as the pastor of Paradise Baptist Church at fifty, fifty-one-hundred and Broadway, having served as the co-pastor, and he, he assumed that responsibility from his father, who had been the pastor for, the founding pastor of that church. Pastor Iverson was a man of patience and great compassion, but he was also ambitious. He believed that he could serve the community beyond the walls of the church by inspiring volunteerism, creating youth programs, hosting community events that were open to everyone, and truly building a house of worship for everyone. He was also a real pioneer in this area of homelessness, and provided many programs there at the church and surrounding areas for those in need. He had a vision for, he had a vision to provide affordable housing in the community and organize the New Life Economic Development Corporation. His first project was a forty-three-unit building on an underutilized parking lot at the church. In two thousand and six, he restored the aging church, added nine classrooms, a dining space, and updated the technology. Pastor Iverson was of great importance to my office and to me. He did not hesitate to host the Days of Dialogue in his sanctuary and many other events at his church when he was asked. He was generous with his time and always offered resource to those in need. He is survived by a host of family and friends and members, and he will be greatly, greatly missed. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, I, I too have a, an adjourning motion. You know, I think, in looking at how big our council districts are, roughly three-hundred thousand people, we all know there's maybe a dozen that actually do more than anybody else. They are on every Chamber of Commerce, Kiwanis Club, put all the events together in the community, and they aren't newly on the surface doing it. They've been doing it their entire lives. They've dedicated their lives to doing this. And we just lost one of those great ones, Frederick J. Whitecamp. Fred was born, actually, on November fourteenth, nineteen twenty-seven, in Hollywood Hospital and was raised in Glendale. He passed away, thank God, peacefully, on Saturday, September first, at Holy Cross Hospital, just shy of his ninety-first birthday. He was very active in Boy Scouts and was an Eagle Scout. In fact, he graduated in nineteen forty-five from Granada Hills, I'm sorry, from Glendale High School and was class valedictorian, of course he was. He then served for eighteen months in the United States Army, where he was honorably discharged and attended Occidental College on a partial scholarship, where he was very active in college activities. He was a member of Kappa Sigma Fraternity and served as its president, and Fred continued his education from there, going on to USC Law School, became an executive director of the Phi Alpha Delta Law Fraternity, and in nineteen fifty-five, he moved to Granada Hills. That forever changed Granada Hills. He was incredibly active, and in fact, in banking activities at first, having founded Lifetime Savings and Loan Association, and then the Rancho Simi Savings and Loan Association, and of course, after that, the Great Bank of Granada Hills in nineteen eighty-three, where he served as chairman of the Board of Directors for over twenty years. He was a judge pro tempore of the Los Angeles Municipal Court, an arbitrator for the Los Angeles Superior Court, on the American Arbitration Association, a mediator for probate trusts, conservatorship matters, and Los Angeles County. trusts, conservatorship matters in Los Angeles County. And if none of that were enough while he was building his law practice, contributing back to the community and raising a family, he was very active and served two terms as president of the Granada Hills Chamber of Commerce, president of the Granada Hills Optimist Club, chairman of the Board of Trustees of the Granada Hills Methodist Church, chairman of the Board of Trustees of the St. Paul's Lutheran Church, director of the Granada Hills Community Hospital, on the Board of Directors for the YMCA, on the Board of Governors Committee for the Nude Horizons, a member of the Audit Committee of New Horizons, the treasurer of St. Joseph Lutheran Church. It actually goes on for four more pages. It's remarkable. I started off by saying that out of all of, and as big as our districts are, and we can probably count on one hand how many people are actually that active, and don't just sit on the boards, but they actually sign up and show up for every single activity for that many years. There aren't many, and he was one of them. He was a man who understood that it was with success that also came responsibility to give back to your community, to be somebody, and somebody to somebody else. He always was there to help anybody who needed it, never said no. He was a man of the year twice in Granada Hills. He had two children from his first marriage, John and Robert, but it was in nineteen seventy-two that he married the lovely Betty Sue, also a dear friend of mine. Sue adopted her two daughters, Melinda and Valerie, also later, of course, acquiring two stepsons, Bob and Troy. Fred had seven grandchildren and five great-grandchildren, and he was truly an inspiration, certainly not only to the community and his entire family, but to me personally. And he will forever be remembered, and may Fred rest in peace. He deserves, his family deserves only the best. Thank you, colleagues, for letting me memorialize somebody incredibly special in my community and a friend of the family. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.